Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 5th, 2022. Order, would you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comment and announcement? Brad? I don't see it many meetings.
Yeah, my yearly appearance here, so thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Selectmen. I come before you, sorry, my name is Brad Willis. I'm a lieutenant with the Fire Department here in town. I live in town also, so just to make that clear. But our, the Howard Fire and Police Departments will be again hosting the Homeless for the Holidays program in Brooks Park. We're going to start on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, and we'll be in the park straight through till Sunday morning. We encourage anybody who wishes to drop off donations can stop by any time on those days. We'll have volunteers standing by to accept the donations. Again, this year, we'll be donating all proceeds of cash, gift cards, non-perishable food items, and new unwrapped toys to the family pantry. So again, we appreciate the public's support in the past. I'll just give you some rundown for the last year and then for our seven-year total. Last year, we collected 732 toys, about 1,000 pounds of food, and just over $10,000 in cash and gift cards, bringing our seven-year total to 7,167 toys, 12,220 pounds of food, and $51,492 in cash checks and gift cards, all donated to the family pantry. Sadly, the demand for all this stuff is skyrocketing, as we all know recently, with the prices of everything jumping so severely in the last year. I've spoken with the pantry, and they're eagerly awaiting our drop-off on Sunday. So whatever people can do will be much appreciated. So on behalf of the men and women of the Howard Fire and Police Departments, I thank the public for all their support over the years and look forward to another successful year. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Brad. Brad?
Yeah.
Hours?
Oh.
Thank you, Don.
Sorry.
So we'll be starting on Wednesday at 8:00 a.m., and we're, we'll be there straight through. Like I said, we will have people camping out this year to kind of show solidarity to the members who are having a difficult time. But you know, anytime people want to come by, 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday through noon time on Sunday is when we're going to close up shop, and we'll be dropping everything off at the pantry, so.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Public comment and announcement, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you, members of the board. As you'll see on the agenda, there's a notice that the public hearing for Chase Escape Cape Cod LLC doing business at Summer House Cafe. As you will recall, the board voted on November 21st to continue that hearing. That hearing will now take place on Tuesday, January 17th, 2022, excuse me, 2023. January 17th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. here in the Griffin Room. And just a reminder, as we get underway tonight for financial discussions, there will be the budget meeting, the round robin, as we call it. That will be on Saturday, March 4th, 2023. That's going to be at the Community Center in the multipurpose room. So again, that all-hands budget meeting will be Saturday, March 4th, 2023, at the Community Center, starting at 9:00 a.m. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else for public comment and announcement? We're going to go to the joint meeting and public hearing with the Board of Assessors. Join us.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Mr. Powers, I am joined by, to my left, Bruce Nightingale, Jake Kavanagh, members of the Board of Assessors, and Gail McLeire, who was our interim assessor. And I'm calling the meeting to the Board of Assessors to order. We are duly posted as a joint meeting this evening.
Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely.
Please. Ms. McLeire will be sending out, distributing documentation to you all. I'm sure you're anticipating this wonderful reading.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, while we're also here, I want to introduce you to one of our newest members of the Assessing Department, Madison Black. Madison, please stand up. She's the newest member of our department. She has been doing a wonderful job. She's there along with Carly Jones, who is our Assistant Assessor. And we again thank them for their hard work getting us to where we are today. This is getting to be our busy time of year. Mr. Chairman, at our meeting early this evening, the Board of Assessors voted unanimously to make the following recommendations to the Board of Selectmen for the fiscal year 2023 classification hearing. On the matter of classifying the tax rate, we recommend that we vote a residential factor of one, so that each class maintains 100% of its full value tax share, and not shift the tax burden from the residential and open space property classes to the commercial, industrial, and personal property. On the matter of an open space discount, we also voted to recommend not to grant an open space discount, which would shift the tax burden from the open space property class to the residential property class. And on the matter of the residential exemption, we also recommend not to grant a residential exemption, which would shift the burden within the residential class from residence to part-time residence. Finally, on the matter of small commercial exemption, we also recommend not to grant a small business exemption, which would shift the tax burden within the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes from certain small commercial properties to other commercial and industrial properties. With that said, Mr. Chairman, some interesting readings you have in front of you. And as you've all been following what's been happening with the real estate market in the last two years, as we look to get our numbers certified, I need to bring your attention that the average single-family value in the town of Howard has risen by almost 24%.
Page five.
Page five. And that the average single-family value has raised from 636,000 to 788,000. Again, a 24% increase in value. As you know, and as to the folks who are watching this at home, when there is an increase in the value of the real property of the community, there is a corresponding reduction in the tax rate. For fiscal year 2022, our tax rate was $8.11. There is proposed, not finalized, but proposed tax rate of $6.68 for fiscal year 23. And as you know, we have discussed the many exemptions over the years substantially. And I think some numbers for you to be aware of, as people may have this discussion with you. At this time, 55% of this community are non-residents. There are approximately 5,300 residential properties in this community that if we did consider residential exemption, that this department of currently 2.5 FTEs would need to rise dramatically to be able to handle the number of potential applications for someone to get a residential exemption. And as I mentioned, the numbers of our average single-family value, you all know what your values are, and you will see it in a couple of weeks when the exvaluation comes out, your 24-some-odd percent increase. That if we did have a residential exemption right now, and the average property of 788,000, a residential exemption would give some people an opportunity to get a credit of about $250. That could be up to 5,000 applications to get that. We, as a board, as you know, in the last couple of years, have filed legislation with the Commonwealth to try to create what we prefer to see in this community is a residential hardship exemption. Because if you did ever consider voting for a residential exemption, there's no means test for that. So if you're a multimillionaire, you're a resident of this community, you could still get potentially that $254 credit back in your taxes. What this board feels, after discussing for many, many years and studying this, that if we could get a hardship exemption for those under the age of 65. And the reason I say that, we have a number of programs that are in place for those over the age of 65 in this community. So that someone who is in need over the age of 65 could qualify for up to $3,000 tax credit every year. So we have filed legislation, or this town has filed, that has been approved by town meeting, a hardship exemption with a means test for those under the age of 65 that would offer frankly double what a residential exemption would. The $254, we would see that up to $500 that could be credited for our residents. These numbers are staggering. The market, and this is strictly market-based. It is strictly based on the real estate market. And everyone knows what's happened in the last two years. And these values go back to January 1st of 2022. So we will see this for the next couple of years because of what the market has been doing. So with those factors, without getting too down rabbit hole with some of these numbers. Okay, the average, thank you, the interim assessor is pointing out that with these changes, the average tax bill would go up approximately $105 or 2%. And again, we do not, nor do you, set the spending limits of this community. That is done, as we all know, at town meeting. But the average person will be going up $105 in the next year. Believe me, there will be plenty of others. I just saw my potential tax assessment, up $160,000 for next year. It'll be far greater than the $105, so. With all that in mind, we do make the recommendation for a factor of one, as we said when I opened, the same recommendations that we have made for a number of years now. And, Mr. Chairman, I would open it to you and to your board for questions.
Thank you. Thank you. Larry?
As usual, an excellent presentation, and you need to see what's the factor of one. This is not a substantial question, but one thing struck my eye was the residential values, as you said, have gone up. The commercial and industrial actually dropped a bit. I'm surprised they didn't track together.
Again, it's a victim of marketplace, sir. And the thing is, that's why these recommendations that we make, shifting a tax rate to, as you could see, a declining market in commercial, would have major impact on those. And again, we have to remember, 97% of this community is residential. We don't have the benefit of some of the other communities that have substantial commercial, industrial.
Thank you, Richard.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just wanted to add to that, was just because these values are, as of January 1st, 2022, it is, but during COVID, you know, it was challenging for businesses. It wasn't a robust market for commercial, industrial.
Yeah, good point.
A lot of them were closed, a lot, yes. You know, they kind of languished without a business, where there was not a lot of.
I'm sorry, I didn't think of that. Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm definitely voting for the factor of one, I have for every year I've been here. But can you get that for me?
That's the Department of Revenue calling.
But I am going to challenge at least one of the premises, because I've been following what's going on in Chatham and Orleans. I get what you're talking about, but even a $3,000 help on the taxes isn't going to help if you can't buy the house. And where we're at right now is, we can make strides, and we are going to make strides with affordable housing on the low end, like 40% or 80% of area median income. There is no legal definition of workforce housing. And I'm seeing increasingly people everywhere, and this gets geeky because I question the validity of running a business in the residential area, but there are Airbnbs everywhere. And being charged even a few hundred dollars more for property taxes is not the impediment for them, because they're probably buying it in cash is a speculative issue. I don't want to see us dump money into market, below market rate, but not quite affordable housing anywhere in this town if we don't have any kind of plan to stop that from being gobbled up by people who are just going to use it as lower Airbnb's.
Mr. Kavanagh brings this up every year as we have this discussion. It's about the impact of the factor of one versus residential exemption. It would exacerbate the housing problem dramatically, because those who are renting properties in town, they would be hit with a much higher tax rate. We know what's going to happen. I'm a landlord, you know, I rent property. If my costs are going up, those costs are being passed on to the tenants who are renting that property. We do have a substantial number of rental properties. Airbnb is a whole different discussion for another day, but the bottom line is that if a factor of one were not resulted, and it did get a residential exemption, it would have a major impact again on housing in this community.
I agree, but I just wanted to blow by this discussion when we have it later on, because I don't know, if the answer is not property taxes, there's got to be another answer that can wind up at least funneling some of the housing stock back into being occupied by people who live here. Even some of the things I've heard is rumors about what happens with pine oaks, and if it becomes an all-age affordable housing, or if they build more senior housing. I don't know how that benefits, because we need workforce. And we need people who are just starting out to stay here, because you can't presume they're going to start here, get out of school, leave here, and never come back again.
And I believe, Mr. Howell, that, as you know, as a housing advocate working diligently for affordable housing, that doing a residential exemption is not the answer to that problem. There are other solutions that we can talk in another forum, but a residential exemption will not solve that issue.
That's all I was trying to do, is set this up for a future meeting, because if this isn't the answer, we got to find another answer.
Julie?
Yeah, no, I have no problem with the information presented in the factor one. I mean, I think that discussion on housing and the problems we're facing in our community with the evaluations continuing to increase is really a housing discussion and a trust discussion, et cetera, so, thank you.
Excellent job. Can I get motions? There was four pre-made motions and they are.
Mr. Chairman, just if I may, sort of a discussion from the public on the, we're in a public hearing.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone in the public wish to say anything?
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
With that, Michael, I'll make four motions, move to vote a residential factor of one.
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Move to not grant an open space exemption?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Move to grant a residential exemption?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Move to not grant a small, commercial exemption?
Second.
Moved in second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the LA 5 that the Board of Assessors has signed, that is necessary for all of the members of the Board of Selectmen to sign, if I could bring that to you, please, and I would ask a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion, yeah, adjourn.
And the board could authorize the chair to sign the gateway on your behalf?
All those motions were seconded with that.
This is a hard copy for to maintain.
I made that. Yes. I remember it clearly, thank you.
Then, we all vote to adjourn. I.
Aye.
Just so everyone's clear, the board voted to.
Authorize.
Have the chair sign the gateway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board.
Next on the agenda is joint meeting with the Capital Outlay Committee and the Finance Committee, so if you want to start, we're getting moved up. Richie?
I'm in first.
You're going to be in this seat.
No, no, you're good.
I'm moving.
You're good.
It's such a good titles.
You should have that over.
Two of us, that's some we asked seven.
Two there?
They don't bite.
You failed, Louie. You got to move down.
All right.
Was it one stack each, or what's going on?
Moving up?
Come in.
As a pro.
It's a good camera. Is that you? Ice, ice?
I'm good.
I'm going to call the Finance Committee.
To my library.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, Richard, I'll call Capital Outlay to order?
Yes.
All right.
Soon as FinCom gets organized.
They already called them, because they just laughed.
Pay attention, Richard.
Joe, did anything change on this? Anything change?
I want to call our committee, Capital Outlay, to order. Today is December the 5th, and we are, we do have a quorum. Two of our members are in fact sitting, they are our representatives to the Capital Outlay from FinCom. We have our five members. We are short two, so I'd like to start our meeting, and it is a joint meeting with FinCom and the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Joe? I turn it right over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just introduce our members?
I was going to ask, can you introduce your members?
I will introduce our members. Karen Dusette, Mark Kelleher, Martha Donovan, Ann Tucker, and I'm Richard Larius. So we can start now, and I will turn it over.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to introduce your members?
We have an hour, go ahead.
They got all their names tagged. We could certainly do that. Dana DeCosta.
Mark Kelleher.
Mark Keller.
Karen Dusette.
Karen Dusette, yeah.
Bob McCready.
Michelle Delucy.
Dan Twork. Mark Amara. There you go.
No substitute?
And I will say that Angelo called me today, he's having trouble walking around, something happened to his leg, so he apologized for not being here. He's probably watching us, you know.
Excellent. Joe, now it's yours.
Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Chairman. This meeting this evening meets the town requirements in the charter for the Capital Outlay Committee to present to both Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee the five-year capital outlay plan, so you should all have in front of you the 11-by-17 document, which shows the years fiscal year 2024 to fiscal year 2028. That represents the plan. And then there is a single sheet, same size, that represents the fiscal year 2024 capital outlay budget, and that is the recommendation on how these matters will be funded. And then, Mr. Chairman, I know it's of great interest to any number of people. When I sent out the materials to all the committees last week, I included the cost analysis report that relates to 204 Sisson Road. So to jump right into it, what you'll see for fiscal year 2024 is an eye-popping $75,469,424 that represents the capital outlay budget for fiscal year 2024. So baked within that, we have nearly $70 million worth of projects related to water and wastewater. We have $3 million that get to our facilities. Within that, $1.9 million gets to 204 Sisson Road. And then the rest is what we might consider to be a, quote, "normal capital plan" of roughly $3 million, and that's what you see laid out before you. You'll also see that there are a number of zeros in the outlying years on the five-year plan, and I think that's just the reality of the projects that are coming home to roost in fiscal year 24, will have a shelf life. And in some instances, we just don't know what's out there on the horizon yet. So you'll see that the five-year plan comes in at $124,339,375. So the breakdown that I gave for fiscal year 24 is 91% of the capital plan is dedicated to water and wastewater. And then when you look on the budget itself, we're looking at 91% of the costs presumably would be borne by debt exclusions. Of course, those relate to the projects. And free cash is the second category, coming in at just over 7%. Mr. Chairman, at this point, I would just turn it over to the three committees and certainly be ready, willing, and able to answer as many questions as I can.
Thank you. Start with Capital Outlay.
I'll ask my members, are there any questions? We've gone through this extensively. We started the process back in September. And the four other members of the committee are brand-new in terms of, this is their first year, so this is the first time they're experienced the rodeo. What, according to the charter, we have to have this meeting today. And that's what, it's an open dialogue. And I've always put the caveat on, is that the plan that you see in front of you is subject to change until town meeting, the night of town meeting. So we, this is a living document. I think we get a little flabbergasted over the budget year of '24, when we have to implement or at least account for wastewater. And we spent a lot of time, and the town spends a lot of time, on, you know, what's the issue, the 40-to-20-year plan, the flattening of debt to make up for this. So we've addressed that as far as we can. We appreciate the efforts of the financial people that are involved in the town as employees to provide us information. And of course, the Board of Selectmen looking at it, because you're experienced at looking at this. I just think when you look at that number, we have to get ready to discuss it in non-financial terms to our taxpayers, when they look and they see, where the hell do you get $75 million, and then you say 90-something percent of it is wastewater? And then you try to explain to them, and that's, I didn't want to interrupt my colleague, Richard, when he starts talking about taxation and so forth, and what it affects the value of homes and so forth. But that one item is the elephant in the room for the town. So we're letting you know it's there, and how we address it, we just have to, in a way that the townspeople can understand it, and understand that, you know, the alternatives of the payment. We've discussed in depth the fact that that number has changed so often. The rules of the game have changed so often. And at the beginning, I think we did a fairly good job of identifying numbers, places, locations, geographics. And I think through the years, four or five years that we've played with this effort, it's changed, and I think it's not the Capital Outlay's position to address and take a position for the town. You know, we're just the numbers in the bean counters. But I think if we can replicate the effort that we did at the very beginning of identifying and helping people understand there is a way to get through this and pay for it without selling your home, I think it's really important. So I think, do you guys want to comment?
I can talk to the process. I'd just like to thank all the department heads who came.
Would you, Richard, just slide the microphone over so the folks at home can hear? Thank you.
I just wanted to talk to the process a little bit, because this is my first year. I thought all of the department heads who came before us were awesome. They were very thoughtful about what they presented. They're very knowledgeable. We did a number of site tours, so we could physically see what needed to be repaired or replaced. We went to the harbor. We did two site tours at the 204. And I didn't get the impression that anybody was trying to game the system and ask for more than they needed. And in some cases, I really felt that some of the department heads came to us, and they were just looking to bring their group up to a standard, a baseline. They were really lagging behind in a lot of ways in infrastructure and capital. So I know that, you know, we'll probably get into the details of a lot of this, but it's, I hope that we don't. it's, I hope that we don't, you know, cut the day-to-day business because we have a big chunk to pay for wastewater. I think we have to be able to do both and walk and chew gum at the same time. I also think it was great, you know, that Joe shepherded us through the whole process and made it work smoothly. And Rich got us to meet early and often, and so I think this gives, compared to last year, the Finance Committee and the Select Board a lot of time to look at all of the details. So hopefully, it's a good thing in that sense.
Thank you. Second. Turn it over to Peter. Peter, yes?
Turn it over to Peter. Here we go. Hey, so thank you very much. As you know, the Finance Committee's been waiting for this day for a long time, particularly as it relates to the middle school, because we were told in the process that wait till the capital plan comes out, wait till the capital plan comes out. So, okay, here we are, which is great. So if I just start with that, and by the way, we'll be reviewing in detail the capital plan and the cost analysis at the middle school in our meeting on Thursday, and we'll provide feedback, you know, formal feedback, so you have it as we work through it, okay? So my first question has to do with the middle school, and that is, is the cost analysis that, Joe, you provided us, is that meant to be the definitive document that takes us to town meeting? That is the so-called study that we talked about at the last town, annual town meeting? Or is it just one element of what we hope would be a comprehensive business model, if you will, a business plan for that building?
Quite simply, it's meant to respond to a board directive of creating a cost analysis report. So it's in response to the Board of Selectmen's discussion.
Okay, so.
So any further reference to that, I would take direction from the board on.
Okay, so I guess one thing we'll want to see from the board is now that they have that, what is their plan to move forward to address the concern, not the concerns, but the topic of a plan for the building that we all talked about, the annual town meeting, and where it will go from here and how it gets to town meeting.
Peter, I would ask, just define what more you're looking for than what is in that report.
Oh, okay, so if you want to get into that, I think this report.
I mean, and you can send that to me. That doesn't mean it's even tonight.
Okay, all right, but here's the thing.
But actual question.
Yeah, oh, absolutely. This plan has no vision. When I envisioned, when I think we talked about at least dreaming of the possibilities of a cultural center, you know, what to do with the middle school, I had a lot more expectations of what we could do. This, to me, and I'll be negative about it, but it's more like putting Band-Aids on it until we figure out what we want to do. I'm expecting we get to the town meeting and see things like, okay, here is the floor plan. Here are some of the programs and offerings we'll be having. Here is the music studio, or the rehearsal rooms, or the pottery area, or, you know, specific things. And I also expect to see how we're going to build out whatever the municipal use is going to be for it. And quite frankly, one of the questions is, we have so much space down there designated in this report for municipal, you know, for town use. Are we ultimately planning to move this building down there? I don't know. It's a discussion, right? I mean, so I'm expecting to see something more? And maybe you're not expecting to do that. I don't know. You know, I heard us talk at town meeting about, oh, we have funds to hire an architect or somebody to do an evaluation if we need it. And I think with what you have here, it's time to start putting some meat on the bones. Not that these things are necessary, and not that they shouldn't be done, but it's only the start, from what I see, to make that building be all it can be, you know? And then let the voters decide. They want it to be all it can be, or they want to keep putting Band-Aids on it, you know?
If you would have that conversation, compile a list of questions. I'd also like the consensus of the Finance Committee's vision of the building. It's funny, I'm the only one that got asked at town meeting what my vision of the building was. My vision may be different than your vision.
Sure.
I think that that, as brief a document as that is, in my mind, there's more meat on that than we've ever talked about. It's showing what we can do with space. And it's funny, you bring up this building. I would argue that the worst building we have in the town, except for the West Howard School and Bank Street, is this building. So wherever we end up in that building, it's an asset that we have that, thank you for the site visits. What's on here are the absolute needs to get us to that point. What can it become? That's what the town will make of it. If you want us to put together our vision of it, that's the basis of our vision right there. And I think that there's a lot of growth potential. Two things to consider that aren't often talked about, the shared septic system with the elementary school. So whatever we do with that building, we're going to bear the cost of putting a septic system in for the elementary school. If we decide to tear it down, which has been mentioned by several, that's a million and a half now minimum to tear it down. It's been said, well, that's one time. But based on the projection and the numbers in this report, it makes sense to me, at least, to put some money into this building to continue to use it in case we need it. And maybe the further conversation is, what are we going to do with this building if we move over there?
So for me, I've accepted the fact, we own the building. We own it. We're going to continue to use it. So now the question becomes, how do we use it to the maximum effectiveness for the electorate and for the citizens? You know, how do we do that? And I think it's a discussion to be had. So Mike, if I could just follow along with that. So if I look at the playbook going to town meeting, okay? One of the questions is, you know, the capital plan is going to come up, right, in certain sequence. We're going to talk about, you know, voting to fund these things, okay, in the way you have it set up, fund it out of free cash, without what I think is the document that defines where we're going with the building being considered or voted on. So I'm just asking that question as a sequence. You know, if we stand up and say, these are Band-Aids, and that's what we're doing to get us through a couple of years, but the bigger plan is like this, you know, I want to see us get to that vision. You know, I think, for instance, you know, that place should be covered with solar panels. I think there should be charging stations for electric vehicles in the parking lot. I think in the front yard, there should be three or four tiny homes that people who either come there to be guest artists or, you know, workers or whatever can live there, you know? I think there should be some community garden element of it around the property. And I think it's just like, I can dream about this all day long and start throwing dots at the wall, but somehow, some group has to start putting that together. And this is a great first start. I mean, I'm not taking this negative. I'm just saying, I think there's more to it than what we have here.
Okay. Comments from the board on what Peter's saying? Larry?
Yeah, I made some of these points at town meeting, the last town meeting. I would look at it, Mike, a little bit differently. I don't think it's, I'm not so interested in our vision or your vision, quite frankly, Pete. What I'm interested in is that we're repairing the building without an idea of what we want to do with the building at the end. And it needs to be done. I think if you had a normal marketing strategy, we'd do a survey of the needs and Harwich and on the tape, and see what we can best fulfill in that meeting, and be sure that the work we're doing drives us in that direction. And I would like to see this as a good first step. But the next step then is to really get community input. And as I say, as I said in the past, not just only Harwich, but originally, you know, what are the needs? What could we be doing to take full advantage of that building?
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not real interested in getting involved in the conceptual discussion tonight, because I think Peter's thought is right. Between the two of you, you put down what it is you're interested in specifically, and we can address that. What I do want to say, though, is, because I must have conflated that somehow at the last meeting, if you can get to a definition, if there's a consensus on, okay, this area has this, this area has that, and that's how we're mapping it out, and here are the needs that are associated with that. It wasn't just CPC I was talking about. I was also talking about, there's a vast number of cultural grants that are available. We don't have to pay for all this if we can define what areas are being used for what and who's going to benefit from the use of those areas. So, I mean, it all flows from that. I have no opinion until I see that.
Julie?
I don't disagree that we need to continue to assess, you know, where we're going with the building and a vision, but I think we, as a board, have talked quite extensively about that. I also think we need to recall that we've just recently hired somebody to assist us in developing different programs and such. So I think we also need to be mindful that we've got $2 million to put into this asset. In the same token, there's no way we could ever build anything for $2 million, let alone what it would cost us to demo it, never mind the septic system. So I think we can collectively say that we all have different visions for what the building is, and we can have that discussion. But I think it's an important discussion, and I think there's a lot of life in that building.
Thank you, Julie.
My team, that's the same. Right? Just on that building, we're going to talk about it on Thursday night at our meeting in detail, but Dana?
Yeah, I agree with many of the sentiments that we need to have some of those answers by the time we get to town meeting.
Dan?
Mark, I'm sorry.
Looked an awful lot like mine.
Yeah. No, I see over a five-year period, almost $3 million. I do think there's a lot of unsane things there that within five years, you'd have $5 million to put into that. And then you'd still only have a building you could use eight or nine months a year without air conditioning. And I agree with Peter, there are some innovative things out there to look at, where you use heat pumps and things like that, but I just think there's a need for imagination, and I think the cost that we're seeing, Sean does a great job, is understated. I think there's a lot more work there to be done than what is showing.
Yeah, I would agree. I think that has huge potential over there. I mean, I don't think any of us, at least, I completely agree with that. There's so much to be done. But I think this capital plan falls short and of what we will need to make even the vision that's been laid out in this current plan, which I think is not fully baked. We know that. Even Joe, you said it the other day. I mean, they did the best they could to put the programs, get some ideas. But I don't think that's fully baked, so I don't think we know what the vision is. But let's just say this, if you build this out in the way we, you know, to take full advantage of it, you're going to need to hire more people to run the programs, you're going to need, Eric's probably going to need people, Karen might need people, I don't know. But we haven't addressed that in this plan. The head count to run this place is not accounted for. The, Mark already mentioned the AC. Joe, we're using window air conditions, but that's not going to fly. If you're going to make this sort of a state-of-the-art place, that doesn't work. So that's a whole lot of money. We have a partial budget for, to replace a few windows in '24, but that's a huge building with a million windows, and eventually, some of those are going to have to be replaced. I think the outside, you know, when I talked about the fields, in order for Eric to fulfill his plan, he needs new fields, updated fields, bathrooms, I don't know. There's a whole ton of stuff that probably needs to be done out there to make it useful. And none of that's in the plan. There's a whole ton of stuff that is not in the five-year plan. And I, we're saying in this plan, we need that stuff to fulfill this plan in FY '24, but it's not in here. And so that's missing. That has to be in here. If we think we need to, in order to get the best revenue we can in this place, and we said, we can't raise the rates until we improve the building and make it, you know, more appealing or more in line with what other buildings like this or communities have. I just think it's a great start. I just think it has fallen, it's perfect for now. If we present this at town meeting, it will fall short, is my view on it. I think there's a whole lot of, I don't think it's $5 million over five years. I think it's going to exceed 10, and that's my opinion. And I, you know, just based on all these different things that don't have numbers next to them is my, that's my biggest concern. But I do think the place could be amazing. It's a matter of, can we swing it with a $70 million water bill? Don't know.
Bob?
Well, I'm certainly one of the people, brand-new to this committee, and so I don't have the history of the committee's discussions previously on this topic. So I think I will just agree with Peter's original comments with regard to the need for a more comprehensive vision for us to have to go forward and stop there.
Michelle?
Yeah, I guess I just wonder, how do you put a number down without the points that you make, which is, how do you come to this number, you know, with confidence if you haven't solidified those specific concepts of what's going to be there? That's a little bit uncertain.
You know, one thing I would say about that is, you know, this is a five-year plan. It could be that even if you lived through the vision, it's a 15-year plan. I mean, you know, potentially. So what's here before us now is what to do in the immediate year coming up is what it basically amounts to, and there's some after that.
Yeah, these two conflict right now.
There are some things after that.
There's stuff missing from the FY '24.
Right.
In order to achieve the FY '24 vision, we need to add that stuff in.
How about Dan?
I'm, I think I concur with Peter's comments to the degree that I think that what's missing, in my view, is some strategic vision of where this place is going to go. What's its vision? What's its mission? What goals will it have? Objectives, performance indicators, performance measures? Trying to hold that out, and then you've got some sense of where this money's going to be spent. I mean, without that, we're just kind of floating out there in a sea.
Mark? All right, well, I would say that I disagree with 80% of you, but that's not uncommon. I think that there is a vision, but I'm going to let residents speak. I'm going to go back to Capital Outlay, and then we're going to end 204 Sisson and get back to the topic, which is the capital plan. And I look forward to many, many more meetings and conversations about 204 Sisson. Mr. Waystack?
Mr. Chairman, plural, and boards, Richard Waystack. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to be at 204 on Saturday. If you did, that building was rocking. It was full. There was a lot of economic development happening there, a lot of people selling. It was a tremendous event. And you've got two things going for you now that we did not have at town meeting. You have a cultural director who did an incredible job in her last position in Plymouth, who's been on the job five months, who filled that building this weekend. You have a new town planner that was just hired. And with all due respect to the financial leadership of this community, you've got some people who can put a vision together. I was one of those people on the first repurpose committee. We had a vision at that time to put housing in at that site. And Peter, you mentioned the tiny homes out front. That was one of the items that was on the proposal, to put some additional town homes up front in addition to the building. It was overwhelmingly rejected by this community. There was a second repurpose committee, and I wasn't interested at that point, after serving on the first one and being shot down, of not getting involved. But I think you need to put the right people together. You folks are looking at the finances of the community, which is important. You heard me talk about some of the numbers earlier. But I think if there's going to be a true vision for that building, you need to put the right people together to get that done. You've got two of them that I would recommend to all of you that you get started with. Your new cultural director and your new town planner. And then you could have a vision, and I think that building has got tremendous potential. And by the way, that building was open for 10 months a year when the kids went to school there. Because many of our kids went to school there. And it was warm at times, there was no air conditioning, but they still learned pretty well. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Larius?
Mr. Chairman, I was on the same committee as Mr. Waystack, and I voted to knock it down. So let me just set that record straight. I think, listen to everyone, everyone has great input. The thing that I think we have to understand is, number one, it's a municipal building, okay? We call it the Cultural Center. We'll call it 204 Sisson Road. I don't understand the analysis that we're doing vis-à-vis the other municipal buildings that we own. And we're not, we haven't, if this is the first out of 72 buildings, then I'm all for it. I don't think we have, I mean, we have resources that can add value to any analysis, but I wouldn't expect somebody to be totally responsible for making the decision. I'm in all, I'm for a subcommittee, and I think I mentioned it before, a subcommittee of experts from different committees to look at it and analyze it. I wouldn't put it on Capital Outlay, I wouldn't put it on FinCom, and I wouldn't put it on the Board of Selectmen. I think we need, just the recommendation, to move forward with someone outside this circle to look at it and add value that way. And I know we, I think that And I know we, I think that may have been, Mike, I think you talked about it, having some type of subcommittee at some time. And I think this is the perfect example of where it's an unbiased view with the addition and the added value of some employees. That's just what I think.
Thank you. And we'll bring this back for board discussion on next steps in the very near future. I'll open it up for a very brief comment. We're here to talk about the entire capital plan, not debate the merits of keeping or getting rid of that building.
Thank you, Mike, I understand that. And I hesitated at getting up.
Just say your name for the record.
John Chori. And I was a member of the Finance Committee last year at town meeting. The town approved Article 57, and I'm just going to read the last paragraph of that article, because that is what the chairman of the Capital Outlays Committee just mentioned. There needs to be a detailed analysis done of this thing. And this is what we agreed to at town meeting, in the private meeting that the Finance Committee and the Selectmen met together. We were supposed to form a committee to study this, members of the Finance Committee, members of the Selectmen.
Just one correction, it wasn't a private meeting. It was a posted meeting. We have the paper here tonight, it was a pre-meeting.
Okay, it was. It was a public meeting.
Posted. It was a private meeting.
Thank you.
Did you get the invitation, Bill?
It was posted, the meeting, okay. I'm just going to read this, and this sums it up. This is what the town voted on at town meeting to get done, and this is what should be done. "The purpose of this article is to enlist independent professional help to objectively determine the best uses, along with evaluations, pros, cons, and risks of each option for long-term use of this town asset. This study will also develop a comprehensive business plan specific to the Cultural Center 204 Sisson Road, use that the, provides detailed financial organizational staffing, marketing plans for this option to be financially self-sustaining." And that's what the town voted on, and that's what the town should get. What you're doing tonight is a good step, but it's not what this article detailed and what the town voted on and what the town should get. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Peter, back to you, and we're going to move on from 204 Sisson Road.
I'm set with it. So, we're going to take it up. We're going to take it up, as I said, and our meeting is on our agenda for Thursday night. Get part of that meeting, we come up with a consolidated list of comments, we'll bring them, we'll send them to you and we can consider them in the future.
Thank you. Anything else on the capital plan from Finance Committee?
Any other topics, Dan?
I hesitate to bring up the $68,700,000 when we just spent that much time talking about $3 million, but I'm going to. In the capital plan that we approved last May, that we're working with right now, those three items totaled $39 million, and now they total $68,700,000. And I'm just wondering, did the scope of work change? Is it just because of the cost added? Because the next year, there's $2.5 million and $2.5 million, that didn't change. So I'm just wondering why the big increase on those three items. Is it the scope or is it, what's going on here?
Where are the items?
The items are Route 28 water main replacement was $7 million, now is $14,700, that's underwater.
Under the water department.
Water department.
Front sheet.
Was $7 million, now is $14,700.
Okay.
And then below that is the two East Howard Collection System, $30 million, now is $47 million. And Route 28 sewer main installation was $2 million, now is $7 million. And that's really the big increase from the current plan to this year's plan is right there. And I'm just wondering.
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the testimony of our water wastewater superintendent, the cost increase that we've just calculated are largely due to supply chain issues.
Okay, so based on that, my real question is, on this entire first column, 2024, how much of this is going to come to town meeting with a bid?
The projects are being worked on by the water wastewater superintendent, so the $47 million, the 14.7 and the 7 million, because we're going to have to go through for various state and federal funding. So the numbers on those are solid, however, they're going to continue to be evaluated during the process. The other numbers, I don't know that there's any others that warrant, given that they're, you know, amalgamations of numbers. You know, even when you look at the $1.9 million for the old middle school, that's a number of different items there, it's not 1.9 million of one spend.
The reason I ask, we'll just pick that as an example, a lot of the backup for that says that we can't move on with raising revenue if the things aren't there. If some of these are short, as we've done in the past, and do we have to wait another year to get the rest of the money to do some of the, like the curtain that they talk about for the auditorium? Will that be a bid price or will that be this guest event?
We started talking about massive infrastructure projects, and we just went to curtains in the auditorium, so I'm confused.
Right, so I'm just wondering.
So with regard to the massive projects, we have an outline on that from the water wastewater superintendent. With regard to some of the items within the old middle school, these are quotes that we have on hand, these are solid numbers that we have through our Director of Cultural Affairs. So there's a little bit of commingling going on. We're talking $75 million all-in, 68 million of which are massive projects that we continue to refine. And to the earlier question, those numbers are what are impacted by supply chain issues. We don't anticipate some supply chain issues on auditorium curtains or a bi-fold wall or chairs. Okay?
Dana, the answer to your question is yes. We're planning on getting bids before we go to town meeting.
That would be great.
You made that mistake in Phase Two.
Mr. Chairman, if I could though, I want to be careful with my words. The bid, the bids are related to the massive construction projects.
Right.
We're not going out to bid for something that doesn't require a bid if it's $40,000 in the auditorium.
I'm talking about wastewater.
All right, is there a plan if some of your numbers are short?
We don't, which numbers are we talking about now?
The lower-priced items. If any of these items on this list.
So we've gone for the.
We're going to have articles.
Yeah, we've gone for the higher number that the marketplace has out there with an expectation that in some of these, we're going after grants. So we're going for the higher costs that we expect it to be, but expected to be offset by grants.
Okay. I just saw such a big swing on three numbers from seven months ago to now.
If I can emphasize one more time, the big swing is on massive infrastructure projects, where they went from $39 million to $68 million. We did not see massive swings in pricing for fairly routine items, such as an auditorium curtain.
But the future is beyond '24, those prices haven't been adjusted yet.
For which category?
For the bigger items, like 2.5 million collection design system, those prices didn't go up.
Not at the present time, correct.
All right, I'm good.
Let me just be clear. So, Joe, on the generator, for instance, at the middle school, whatever, 204, whatever we're calling it, when we get to town meeting, you will have a price with this documentation as to what that price should be, right?
Correct.
And then subsequent to town meeting, when you get the authorization, you're going to go buy the thing, right? And we would expect it would be the same price that you brought to us unless something comes up, right?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll have backup, I guess, is the question, right? Whether you want to call it quote bid, whatever, is that what you're getting to?
Yeah.
Let me just make a comment.
May I, just, sorry, this is Dan Palatier, water wastewater superintendent, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things about the bid.
Okay, hang on one second, Dan. Go ahead, Rich.
I did say this is a living document. I did say it's subject to change, and that supports everything that Joe has said. And it will change, I said, till the night of town meeting. So, live with it. That's the way we've done it in the past, and we haven't beaten up on the numbers. They're anticipated, we have something called now supply chain issues, which affects the bigger numbers. We didn't have that in the past. In the past, we would change numbers, and we're still subject to change. So it's nothing new. That's what.
Dan, go ahead.
I thank you. So Dana was asking about the ability to bid prior to town meeting. And just with us using the state revolving loan fund, we're actually not able to do that unless we went out to what they refer to as bid at your own risk. So the process with SRF is, we need to have the design as well as the authority to appropriate the money prior to submitting the final SRF application. So as we move closer to town meeting, the numbers will be refined based on bid numbers, and that was ultimately what reflected the increase that you're looking at tonight, was those figures were all updated based on new bids during pandemic era supply chain. So while we won't be able to bid prior to, because SRF presents that, we will be refining that number as we do get closer to town meeting.
Thank you, Dan. And that is Dan Palatier, our water wastewater commissioner, superintendent. Any further questions to Dan or?
That was my big one.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, plan. Let's go down.
What's that?
If I could, while we have the water wastewater superintendent on the line, the $47 million as an example, as well as the $7 million. Dan, can you speak briefly to the programs that we're anticipating to take advantage of, so that if the number is $47 million, we don't anticipate that being the full project cost after forgiveness?
Absolutely. And if I can just, yeah, so we have a number of pots of money that are available to us. One, the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund, that looks to offer us 25% principal forgiveness. We have the disadvantaged communities program, which when we did Phase Two, we were a tier two community, we're now tier one. That offers an additional 6.6% principal forgiveness. And the federal infrastructure bill, the information they've been able to relay to us thus far is that it's going to be coming through the SRF program, and they're looking to augment and supplement the disadvantaged communities program. So when I ran the numbers preliminarily, after principal forgiveness, I'm estimating, for example, Phase Three would drop from $48 million, likely back down to the 30 that we had anticipated. However, town meeting will be required to appropriate the larger amount, because it isn't until the loan is closed out that the principal forgiveness gets applied.
Thank you, Dan.
Can I just ask Dana a question?
Go ahead.
Hey, Dan, this is Peter. Can you just tell us with the $47 million, the East Howard system, over how many years are you going to be spending that money? I know you get the commitment at next town meeting, but then you're going to take, what, three years, four years to spend it?
Yeah, so my understanding is there's short-term authorizations that take place during construction, it doesn't actually hit the tax rate until construction concludes. So with Phase Two, we're likely to see the debt for that fully hit the tax rate this next fiscal year. So the same would be the case with Phase Three, it would likely be that two to three-year construction, and then it would ultimately hit the tax rate.
Okay, thank you, Chairman.
Yes, Dan, you're there. Dan, you did a wonderful analysis for us for the Capital Outlay Committee about how you take $47 million, you bring it to 35, something like that. It's called anticipated principal forgiveness. You know what I'm talking about?
That's what he was just referring to.
Yep.
Pardon me? He was just referring to that, I think.
And I'm saying, I'd like to get a copy to the Board of Selectmen, maybe, Dan, you can send it to FinCom and to the Board of Selectmen. He did an excellent analysis on that topic.
Yep.
As what counts in the end is, you know, you take the total cost of the project, it's what the taxpayers have to pay.
Right.
Right?
And that's what he drives.
Exactly.
And you guys should see this.
Exactly.
I requested it, he did it for us.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, just one other thought to interject here, because I sit on that Clean Waters Board. The dispersments are not linear. So because the way the bylaws were written, they circle around the communities that have different projects, and it's, just because they gave $2 million last year doesn't mean that we get $2 million next year. So I caution everybody that this was supposed to be an equitable distribution across the Cape, so it doesn't necessarily always go to us in the same amounts.
Okay. Anybody else on my board with other questions on the capital plan for this evening?
I have a question about, or a comment about the funding sources. So we're looking at using $5.3 million of free cash to pay for a lot of this capital. And I don't know how much is in our free cash fund at this point, but, you know, I've actually had a few people ask me, like, why do we keep just spending free cash? Why don't we give people some relief? If all we're talking about is tax increases, why don't we do something if we have all this extra cash? Is there an opportunity to do something for the taxpayer in a more favorable way than just keep, you know, layering on? And I don't know if there is or there isn't, but that's just a question that I've gotten.
We will be having a free cash conversation in upcoming meetings.
Do you know how much is in that right now?
About $7.5 million.
Just under $7.5.
Seven and a half in there, yep.
$7.44 if we're counting.
And $5.3 would go towards this plan. So that's the question that I've been asked, so I was just curious if we, I know we'll talk about it later.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're good for tonight.
Great.
You're good?
You're good?
We're good, we're good.
All right.
Anyone in the public? Anyone online?
Michael, just about there. I've had that same thought as you brought up, because I'm thinking, you know, using money in free cash, but, you know, save the $1.000, basically $2 million for the 204, what we're calling that, old middle school. Why, when I go down that path, it occurs to me that if we don't use free cash, then we have got with the debt exclusion. So we're not helping our tax rate at all. That's kind of the cash flow that I get into, because I said, well, why would, it's unusual for us to go that large a free cash expenditure for an item like this. So I was ready to challenge that and said, well, wait a minute, we're going to pay for it, it's not going to help us on the tax rate.
Yeah, and that assumes you approve it all, right?
You know, it could be, the question is.
If we do it, if we pay for it, if we don't pay for it, then it doesn't happen.
And the question to focus on is, how do we get to that much free cash and how do we not get that high in the future?
Well, that's an upcoming discussion.
Because that money really is taxpayer money when you come down to it. So let's not generate, we love free cash, right? Let's not get that high in the future, so maybe we've got to look at how we actually get there.
All right, Don?
Free cash is not free.
And it's not cash.
That wasn't the comment, but especially after last town meeting, I thought we had litigated this to death and we've got a capital plan now where there's only two things that are supposed to be happening. You add a fifth year on and everything squishes down. Four becomes three, three becomes two, two becomes one. So that gets to the question about how does that align with year two of last year? I have this microscopic version of last year's town meeting article, and I don't have a prescription that allows me to read it all. I would ask that this plan somehow get aligned, especially year one here, with year two last year, to see where we are. I mean, I guess the question, Rich, is, is there anything anywhere in this plan where something went a year sooner or things got thrown into something that was in year two but now?
I think we have, I understand your question. The theory is we have to bring the people back in and say, what do you think?
It's more in the theory, it's actually, there's two different votes. If you did bring something more than one year down, or combined things and brought them in the first year, you have to get a two-thirds vote to get that approved, not a simple majority. That's why it's kind of important to delineate, is everything exactly two that dropped to one, or are there things that are different? Because you have to be prepared for a two-thirds vote then.
Yeah, we're going to have to have a two-thirds vote.
I just bring that up because I'm not even sure the public knows, but Dana knows. Get the teacher.
All right, we got to move this meeting along, so?
All right.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Ladies?
Aye.
Let's go down the row, aye, aye, aye. Good start. Well done.
Thank you.
Oh, aye, yes.
Oh, you're having, you're having a meeting now? Oh, yeah, I.
All right, we've got a long agenda ahead of us and people patiently waiting, so the quicker we can clear out, the better. And I'm taking my seat back.
Get out of here.
Get your name tag.
Michael, I don't think I can do this, Michael.
And I forgot my glasses, so I'm flying blind.
Yeah, me with me both. And Don picked on me because I was skipping lines last week.
The answer to that was, I had to reduce it even 50% more.
Hey, Dana, can we clear the room? No more conversations in here, please?
Is that a clue, Dan?
Dana, I know Dana can get everyone out of here.
Everybody did, but I'm clearing them out.[1773.26]
Everybody did, but I'm clearing them out.
Thank you, Dana.
No problem.
Consent agenda, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I moved that we vote to accept the resignation of John Crook from the golf committee effective immediately.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. New business, vote to approve proposed mass DEP watershed permit and Title V regulation comments. In the packet, we have a proposed letter by Dan Pelletier with comments. Larry, you had some changes, I think, or comments?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan?
Mr. Chairman, we have both the Water Waste Water Superintendent as well as Director, they've been working on these comments.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay. I had some comments on the letter, the excellent letter that Dan put together.
Still here, sorry.
Thank you, Dan. Dan, did you get my comments?
I did.
I can read the gist of it, but the letter is good. I just wanted to emphasize some points in your letter. You, are you okay with those?
Yeah, we have, you know, I was kind of hoping this would be the first iteration and I would be able to garner input from the board tonight as well as any comments. I know I have a couple that came back from commissioners since I had issued the draft, so I'd like to incorporate a draft, all the comments, and then circulate a revised draft for everyone to kind of bless.
When do we have to file this until, Dan?
December 16th.
Okay, our next meeting is not until December 19th.
So I don't know what the board's comfort level is, if, you know, I guess in substance, if the draft comments stay there are good and we want to handle it, I guess I'd leave it to the board.
Let me suggest, Dan, that I sent you my comments and you can probably read them. I didn't keep a copy of those. Could you read my comments and see if the board, if they agree with those or not?
Yeah, just pulling them up. Hold on.
In essence, while he's pulling them up, I wanted to further emphasize the cost structure of this. Now, what we're spending for this is going to hurt us funding our critical housing crisis because we only have so much money. The other general point I wanted to emphasize that Dan had referred to, and I'll let him read it, is that when we talk about so-called IA's or the best technology, I want to be careful that we point, we make a point that that's, the result of that's based on monitoring of notion before they, to be sure they fulfill the commitment of IA systems, that we're not doing this and then they don't have the desired effect.
Do you get where he's going with that, Dan?
Yeah, no, definitely. I have his red lines in front of me now. I just don't know how productive it'd be for me to read them, you know, from a remote back to the board.
Those are the major points I want to make. If you're comfortable with that, we can build that in.
Julie?
I can just circulate them to the board. We can give our feedback and then get Dan any draft.
You give them feedback, but ultimately it can't come back to us, that's the point. Joe, are we having a meeting on the, with the Housing Trust next Monday?
That was up for discussion. We have it blocked, but it hasn't been confirmed.
Dan, any chance you can get this ready by next Monday?
A minute.
Thank you. Don?
Yeah, I just want to add to what Larry said. Because contextually, when I get the letter, we're just one of 351 towns and cities as far as they're concerned. It's not just pitting it against housing. I know what the answer is, and I'm pretty sure the Chair does and the other members do, but 5,000 to 7,000 private subject systems in terms of what our total housing inventory is, is nearly every single, single-family house in Harwich. They've got to know that that's what they're actually asking. They're asking the entire town to sewer, but they are not putting out there any mechanism to fund that additional burden. And on top of that, the priority is affordable housing, so you start putting multiple units in places, I don't know how we're going to be able to do that. We didn't even have the third of a billion dollars that this project was going to cost over the original plan, and now they're throwing into this something that's two-thirds more. They need to know in the letter that it's 5,000 to 7,000 out of what? Out of all of our houses? Because the answer is nearly every single residence that we got is going to wind up being hooked up to something under this new plan, and they don't have a new plan that shows new funding.
Okay. Don, will you send a brief email to Dan with any comments?
Yeah, I think Dan knows where I'm coming from.
Julie?
No, I'm just, I understand that we can't wait, obviously, the deadlines before we meet again. So if we circulate the comments, get that feedback, get our info to Dan, worst-case scenario, we could even have a special meeting.
We're talking about having a meeting next Monday night if board members are available with the Housing Trust. I can add the final draft to the letter that night. Joe?
Additionally, you members may have received notice that the Cape and Islands Municipal Leadership Association, which is Boards of Selectmen and Town Council for Bonstable, your regional group is meeting Friday morning to discuss a regional response as well. So there's, I know there's several groups that are working on commentary to go to, up to DEP, so that's another avenue. A few folks are involved in that process.
Thank you, Joe. Funny, as we talked with Finance Committee and Capital Outlay tonight about the cost of the projects now, if DEP actually pushes this forward, you could triple those numbers.
Right.
And they're going to cut our timeline from 40 years to 20 years. All right, so everyone get comments to Dan on any changes you want sooner rather than next Monday. Sooner the better. Vote to approve remote participation for one member of the planning board. Can I get a motion on this?
Can I move that request, that we grant the request for David Harris to remotely participate with the planning board from December through mid-May?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? My only discussion in this comes up, Mr. Harris has been a great member of the planning board, but on a regulatory board, to some people, it's very important to have somebody that they can look at and speak to. And things don't always come across on the projector as people might like, and you certainly can't read tone. So this is something I think it's a larger issue, but, and I think we should have more conversation about it, but certainly I'll vote for it tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. C, Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR certificate of announcement pursuant to 301 CMR 51.08, Section 2, relative to the copulous property conservation restriction. Don? There was a motion in the book?
Yeah, that's the one that's pursuant to 301 CMR?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I should just read the?
Motion to approve, yeah.
Yeah, I move that we approve the certificate announcement as contained in the packet.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to move "aye" up in front of "d," and that would be discussion on renewing the Class II used auto and Class IV auto repair license for Peter Stagg, 182 Route 137. Peter's in the audience, he's patiently waiting and has a guest with him, so if we could move this up, you're all right with it? Good evening, Mr. Stagg.
Good evening.
This was brought up by a board member. I believe it was brought up last year as well, but no action was taken, and a board member has asked basically for clarification on how the property is being used and if there's any intention to use it. They're basically citing lack of use, though we continue to renew the license. So we've invited you here tonight to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Dan Chamberlain. I'm a partner at a law group. I represent Peter Stagg, or my firm does. Thank you for moving us up, I appreciate it. And if I may, before I get started, I have an affidavit from Peter Stagg relating to his business activities.
Thank you, Attorney. Thank you, Attorney.
We're not required to read this tonight.
That's up to you. I'll give you a shortened version. That's perfect.
Mr. Chairman, you actually are correct. You did just have a little bit of a discussion at your previous Board of Selectmen's meeting. There also was significant discussion with your former town planner and building commissioner over the summer as well. This affidavit is actually an updated version of the affidavit that supported a memo along with, that was sent to the former town planner, building commissioner, and subsequently ended up with discussion with town council. It's pretty clear that Mr. Stagg's business is not operating at the current level it once was. However, he has continuously operated his business at that property from 1980 to date. All licenses and necessary certificates have been maintained. All insurance, automotive, and general commercial liability have been maintained. His dealer plate legislation with the state has been maintained every year. His property has been maintained and open for business upon appointments every single year. He has solicited and engaged in customer transactions every year. Over the last four years, he has bought and sold 12 vehicles and four trailers. 2007, actually, five years to date. He holds 12 vehicles inventory, in his inventory that he currently maintains for sale. People contact him via phone and email. Also, I have included in the affidavit the extensive repairs that he has done to those and other vehicles. He is open every year to some degree, and he can, he has maintained that and continues to maintain it. It's important for him to maintain these licenses in the, as though he has currently and openly marketed that property for sale, it's important that he maintains those licenses in the event that a automotive use comes along. He's also open to other uses as well. Basically, any good buyer who has a legitimate project, he's interested in. He also is interested in continuing to maintain his business so long as he's physically able to. I will open up any questions from the board at this time.
Thank you, Attorney. Julie, you want to start?
Sure. So it was me who asked about the status of the license, just because we were going through all the other licenses. And just as a board, being responsible for issuing them, wanting to understand the current activity, obviously, the board discussed it previously too. So that's really the clarification we're looking for, is, you know, the actual status.
Okay. So he's open for business and continues to be so, and that is the extent of his business practice over the last five years?
Thank you. Any follow-up, Julie?
Well, I guess in terms of open for business, and again, not looking to be difficult, just saying that ultimately, if a business is open, I'm going to go to the door and I can go in and?
You can call, you can set up an appointment. Anyone can do that and reach out directly to Mr. Stagg on his phone or email. He may not maintain consistent daily business hours, but he, as needed for customers who do reach out to him, he makes himself available at the shop and conducts businesses. He files tax returns every year. So if he wanted to do business there, just a phone call away or an email.
And repairs and such?
Yes.
Thank you.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've been, I got to admit, I've been concerned for the last five years. I mean, I've lived here since 1990, so I'm familiar with the location for many, many, many years. How many repairs are we talking about per year?
I can't hear.
How many repairs per year? You can see in there, I mean, there's extensive parts and supplies being bought. How many repairs would you say per year?
For outside customers?
There's a pile of, in that affidavit, there's a pile of my parts slips, and for every part slip that's in there, I put something on a car.
But the question really was for an outside individual, because you also do use car sales, so I presume that you would have occasion to make repairs to up those values?
Yes. And I am a mechanic. I started in this business 50-plus years, 60 years ago with tools in my hand, and I haven't stopped yet.
I get that, but how many of the repair parts and repairs were done to outside individuals who owned their own vehicle?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure. Those used vehicles that have been bought and sold have, there's repairs on there, and there's also a group of recurring customers that do come back for annual repair and normal maintenance. What that exact number is, I don't know. It's at least five, and it may be more.
Go ahead, Don.
Just a question through you, Mr. Chair, to Town Administrator, is there a limitation on the Class II used car auto licenses and Class IV auto repair licenses where there's a cap on them in town and you can't go past that?
Meaning, is there a quota?
Yeah.
Not to my knowledge, if memory serves correctly, Chapter 140 only makes reference to the Class II. The Class IV license is a separate statute, and from my perspective, the language is vague at best.
All right, but we wouldn't be precluding somebody else from applying for either of those two?
Not to my knowledge.
But conversely, and this is for Mr. Stagg and his lawyer to hear, is there any way he could sell the business with those licenses by selling those licenses to somebody?
I'm not.
Perhaps an action by us?
I'm not qualified to answer that. That's more of a legal question.
So if he sold the price, he could sell his licenses with him? Our licenses?
I don't know that it has the same commoditization characteristic that an all-alkohol license may have. That's a question that might be better suited for town council.
My understanding is that the actual license itself would need to be reissued under the new owner. However, the use allowance would be permitted. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming use.
Especially since it's not limited, I'd be willing to vote for it, but I really don't see a public benefit accruing to this particularly because it's not, there's not that much going on there.
Yes, and I understand that, but respectfully, Chapter 140, I believe, Sections 56 through 69 are the pertinent statutes as it relates to the specific classes and licenses here, and at no point is benefit to the level of business benefit detriment analysis to the community, and no point is that a factor.
But you're not holding somebody else up?
No, there is no quota.
Larry?
Thank you for giving us an update on where you're going. I'm not going to argue whether it's going or not business. I'm by there all the time, and if it's going business, it's not going great, not much going on there. But I'm like Don and everyone, I can remember when I was very active business. I just wanted some assurance that you're actively promoting the sale of that, because I hate to see what's basically a vacant, to all appearances, vacant building. I hate to see that part of town left that way. So I like, I appreciate you're doing something to keep it going, but I do like the assurance, like your comments, that you're actively trying to move on.
I have nothing. Oh, go ahead, Julie.
So just to follow up on, you know, the reason, again, asking these questions is, you know, we as a board are issuing these licenses. And not to be dramatic, but I take that seriously, we're signing them. And so, you know, we're to do our due diligence as well, and that's really why you're here tonight, and I appreciate your coming. But, you know, I take it seriously when I'm signing documents, and there's a reason that you're coming in front of us. And so when I'm asking if I could come in or call and make an appointment for a repair, because it matters, because to Larry's point, to Don's point, you know, we're issuing licenses for people doing business, and we appreciate the hard work that goes into it. And I know the money that you're paying for insurance, et cetera. So understanding all that, I just want you to understand that my feeling on this is we're issuing licenses, we're signing them. We certainly are, you know, I'm not opposed to moving forward, but I guess the point is, back to the conversation, how long is it just going to sit? I mean, it's your property, there are property rights, I'm not trying to interfere with them. But issuing a license for a business that I don't see really doing business, quote-unquote, becomes, I think, a problem for this board, so just to be clear.
And I respect the fact that you have to sign a document. I think if you I think if you spend the time and go through that affidavit, um, you cannot fairly say that no business is being done there.
Thank you.
I don't know if I have to recuse myself. I bought my first car there in nineteen eighty-nine. Um, can I get a, a motion to approve the license?
Sure. Yeah, I would do that. I'd say, uh, yeah, I, I'll move that we approve the license.
It's two licenses.
The two licenses.
The class-two used auto and the class-four auto repair license.
Thank you. If I could read that, I would have.
Yeah, Larry can't read that. Don, will you read that as a motion, please?
I can lend him my glasses.
They still get old.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we approve, uh, the, a class-two used auto and class-four auto repair license, uh, to be held by Peter S. Stagg located at one eighty-two Route one thirty-seven in Harwich.
Motion's been made. Can I hear a second? I'll second it. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But the only, uh, request is that you keep us informed on the progress of moving ahead of the property.
And that was four yeses, correct? For Joe? Four voted aye?
Yep.
Joe, you got that?
I would only request that when another person comes to buy my building, that you don't slow walk it and take sixteen months before you approve, before it's approvable. Because that's what happened on the last deal, and the guy walked.
Attorney Chamberlain, will you have to give these to anyone else?
No, they're your copies.
Okay. I'm gonna, ours is, mine's gonna be on file in the office, so I don't need it. If you want it, take it.
I don't need them back. Um, they were for tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're getting into, uh, new business D, so whole series of licenses.
When I make it, do you, first of all, do you want to pull any of these to make them separately, because I was gonna go one through four?
I actually don't.
And second of all, can it be understood in my motion that any current terms and conditions that are appended to those licenses would also be onto the renewal?
I would, I would, yes, I would accept that.
Okay, so with that, I moved that we approved the following Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section fifteen, annual liquor license renewals. One, for Born Petroleum Limited, uh, do it, Limited doing business as Harwich Exxon at one seventy-three Pleasant Lake Avenue. Two, Main Street Quick Pick Incorporated doing business as Main Street Market, seven fifteen Main Street. Three, Pizza Shark Partners doing business as Pizza Shark, four oh three Pleasant Lake Avenue. And finally, four, A.J. Luke's of Harwich at Route twenty, two twenty-four, uh, Route twenty-eight. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, this, if anybody wants anything removed, that's fine, but I was gonna go one through ten, and with the same, uh, part of the motion that, you know, appended to every license would be whatever existing terms and conditions are currently there.
Yep.
Okay. With that, I move that we approve the following Mass General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve, annual liquor licenses, uh, as renewals. Number one, Brax Restaurant Incorporated doing business as Brax Landing at seven oh five Main Street. Number two, Blue Stripe LLC doing business as Cape Sea Grill, thirty-one C Street. Three, uh, Spiridon and, uh, Agle, uh, Christakis, uh, doing business as George's Pizza House, five sixty-four Route twenty-eight. Number four, Harwich Pizza, Harwich Port House of Pizza, three thirty Route twenty-eight. Five, Shogun Incorporated doing business as Noble House at twenty-one Route twenty-eight. Zack Incorporated doing business as Castaways at nine eighty-six Main Street, pending the receipt of their fire inspection report. Uh, seven, Allen Harbor Yacht Club Incorporated located at three seventy-one Lower County Road. Number eight, Round Cove Resort Beverage LLC doing business as We Quasit Inn, twenty-one seventy-three Route twenty-eight, um, with a chance of classification requests approved by the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, um, eleven twenty-three, well, that's not twenty-two, it's, uh, twenty-two.
Two twenty-two.
Yeah, that's the year twenty thousand, Joe. Uh, anyway, uh, pending receipt of a certificate of insurance. Nine, Ashwood Food Service doing business as Jake Rooney's at one nineteen Brooks Road, pending the receipt of a certificate of insurance. And ten, Shooting Star Realty LLC doing business as Bukas Restaurant at Ford Depot Road. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion, Julie?
Just one question, um, just making sure that everybody attended their, the training, this annual training. Do we have any?
Uh, there were three that did not. All three, however, have made contact with the police department to be brought back into compliance, is my understanding.
Great, thank you.
Don?
And, and I will say, uh, kudos to this whole process, because I've been hearing from people that there was a significant improvement in the entire area of Harwichport this year, and, uh, I don't have any doubt that it had something to do with, uh, making this normal, that everybody needs to get trained and understand what the responsibilities are.
Thank you, and I would deflect that to my colleague, the chief of police and his team on that.
Everybody deserves a little credit, because everybody's saying to me how much improved it is.
Okay, moved in second, and no further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, Joe?
Thank you.
Same question. Anybody have any questions about one or two? No. Are these, uh, time restrictions and day restrictions identical to last year, Joe? Do you know?
Danielle points out when there is a change, and both of these are in, indoors only, and they are closing at eight o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that, number, I vote that we approve the following twenty twenty-three entertainment applications. WFS Restaurant Group doing business as Red River Barbecue, seven eighty-seven Route twenty-eight, weekdays excluding Tuesdays, eleven thirty a.m. to eight p.m. inside jukebox, radio, television. Sunday, one p.m. to eight p.m. inside jukebox, radio, television. And two, Cape Roots Market and Cafe LLC doing business as Cape Roots Market and Cafe, five fifty-seven Route twenty-eight, weekdays four p.m. to eight p.m. inside jukebox, radio, television, dancing by live performers, live recorded music and amplification. And I have a question before we go on, and it's still bothering me that this, the whole idea of, uh, dancing by live performers. I really doubt we have tap dancers, uh, coming in to perform. What did we really mean on that application? Just people are gonna be allowed to dance, or are they gonna have some higher professional dancers?
What it really means is that...
Don, are you done with your motion?
It, this is the question...
I second it.
Okay, motion seconded. Go ahead, discussion, Joe?
Thank you, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This is gonna come up again.
Um, the application is meant to conform with both the statute and the regulations. Every one of these groups and items is referenced in the regulations, and that's what they're supposed to be asking for.
Well, I get that, but I'm not much for the Holy Grail. I just wanna make sure the public understands, what are we licensing in English?
The, the items listed in the application.
Would this literally be live dancing performers?
It could include that.
Okay. Yeah, never seen it in Harwich before, but...
Well, I think this discussion came up in all fairness, Mr. Chair, in the last, last meeting as well, that the state has broadened its categories so much that is, uh, there's no way to have any meeting anymore. And I don't know if we can find, if we have the authority, we could find through that part of the regulation for our local need that has some definition. This is so broad, I understand, Joe, we're forced to do it, but can we, can we help ourselves out?
Uh, we'll have a conversation with, uh, our licensing authority tomorrow, uh, Wednesday morning, and I'll get back to you.
The motion's been made.
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero, G, yes.
Look, hey, we're both on the same line.
Brought my extra strength.
There you go. Uh, vote to approve the following twenty twenty-three Common Vittler's, uh, license renewals. One, Alexander the Great, uh, do, Incorporated doing business as Alessi's House of Pizza, one eighty-one Route one thirty-seven. Two, Cape Roots Market and Cafe LLC doing business as Cape Roots Marketing Cafe, five fifty-one Route twenty-eight. Three, Warren Fronton Incorporated doing business as Lighthouse Cafe, uh, Cafe, two sixteen Route twenty-eight. Ruggies Incorporated doing business as Ruggies Restaurant, seven oh seven Main Street. Dent Donuts LLC doing business as Dunkin' Donuts at one seventy-five Route one thirty-seven. Dent Donuts LLC doing business as Dunkin' Donuts doing business in four eighty-one Route twenty-eight. Shooting Star Realty LLC doing business as Bukas Tuscan Roadhouse, Ford Depot Road. And eight, Brax Landing Restaurant Management doing business as Brax Landing at seven oh five Route twenty-eight.
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero?
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve the following twenty twenty-three inholders' license renewals, uh, for Braddock Incorporated doing business as Winstead Inn and Beach Resort for Braddock Street, and Braddock Incorporated doing business as Winstead Inn and Beach Resort doing business in four, one fourteen through one eighteen Parallel Street. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero? Next up is, uh, new business J. Vote to send letter to Senator Julian C. requesting repair on the Cape Cod rail trail. Um, if we're gonna make a motion on that, I think we should, uh, broaden the, uh, letter to include, um, Representative Peak, and we should also add the Board of, so, Town Harwich Board of Selectmen to the letter, not just the Bike Ways Committee. I, I thank them for their work, but I think we should put our name on it.
I was gonna actually ask for that.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that we send the letter to, uh, Senator, uh, Julian C., Representative Sarah Peak, uh, from the, uh, Harwich Board of Selectmen requesting, uh, repair of the Cape Cod rail trail by the state.
And Bike Ways Committee.
At the recommendation of the Bike Ways Committee.
The recommendation of Bike Ways.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Electric vehicle charging stations, discussion. Good evening.
Good evening. Valerie Bell, Harwich Energy Committee. Um, just a couple of things before I get started. I did just wanna say that we're gonna miss Barry Worth a lot. Uh, he passed away this month, and, uh, he was instrumental in, um, keeping this whole committee going for years and years and years, so I, I did attend the service. It was very nice.
Thank you.
Um, and just as a comment, listening to all the planning board and, and all of that, hopefully, these boards are also discussing energy costs to running all of these things. Um, somebody brought up air conditioning at the two oh four building. We are a green community. We do, we are eligible for grant money, uh, to put in energy-efficient equipment in our municipal buildings, so, you know, that's, that's an area that, that can be tapped into for that. Uh, and in the future, whatever sewage treatment facilities that we do build, they have to run off of something, and hopefully, we're planning to run them in the future and not run them on past technologies, and just keep all of that in mind. So, we are a green community. The Green, uh, Committee is concerned that we keep moving forward in our commitments to be a green community, and one of the things that we can do is to start moving towards being more welcoming of electric vehicles. Uh, I just wanna remind everybody, in twenty thirty-five, uh, the state of Massachusetts will make it illegal to sell gas-powered cars. That's twelve years from now. Um, and so it's important, I think, that the town be prepared for that and not play catch-up. So I, Cindy, uh, from the chamber, and I got together, and we were approached by a company called EVCON. Um, I don't know if you got a chance to send that stuff that I forwarded to you to the rest of the board?
I shared with the administration.
Okay, so, uh, there are, um, a company that had, the, the members of this company are local, uh, nine, right? The, the nine, nine gallery is Luther, um, so they, they have a vested interest in our community anyway, and they're, think of them like a general contractor for, uh, charging stations and, and E.V., uh, vehicles. Uh, they sort of oversee the sighting and, uh, planning and grant writing and all of that kind of rebates and all of that. They do that for, uh, the town. But the very first thing that we have to do in order to get this process going is, um, Cindy and I sat down with this company, and we identified some spaces out in front of the Chamber of Commerce over in Schoolhouse Parking Lot as being a good spot to start putting in some chargers for the public. Um, couple of reasons why it's important, uh, for us to start moving in this direction. Uh, number one, more and more people are gonna be driving electric vehicles, and if you're making plans to go on vacation on Cape Cod and you happen to drive an electric vehicle, the first thing you're gonna do is pull up your app, and you're gonna see where all the charging stations are. There are very few in Harwich, uh, particularly in public areas, unless you wanna go sit the park and ride, you know, and read your newspaper. Um, so with our downtown Harwichport, it'd be a great spot. People can plug in, go out to dinner, go, go shopping. It's a win-win situation, uh, for the businesses. Um, but the very first step is for the town to sign off on an application, uh, for the ever-source to come and look at those proposed sites to be sure that they are eligible and able to be used to install charging stations. And these would be level-two charging stations that are relatively quick charging stations, so they need a fair amount of electricity, so they need to be close to, you know, a good source of, of electric, uh, output. Um, this particular application, once it's signed, Harwich is under no obligation to buy anything, to do anything. Uh, ever-source doesn't charge for this service. They, they come in and they just tell you, yes, this works. No, it doesn't work. And then from there, the town can decide what they wanna do. And at a later date, uh, we hope we can, um, have, uh, EVCON come in and talk to you about more, a more of a strategic plan on how to get charging stations throughout the town, not just in Schoolhouse Parking Lot. But this, this would be the very first step, and it takes a while to get in the queue. Uh, as you can, uh, as you can imagine, ever-source has got a lot of these applications pending. Um, they're tapping into some big bucks, uh, so ever-source will be paying for part of the installation of these charging stations through, uh, a program, I think it's called Make Ready. They get funding, you know, through state and federal grants, and, and they use that to, to do this. So this particular application, no obligation to, to EVCON, no obligation to ever-source. It is just permission for ever-source to look at these sites. That's all, that's what we're asking for, for today.
Thank you, Valerie. Appreciate it.
And I know, did you get the copy of it? I have another copy.
We have another copy.
Okay.
And Luther just got here. If you have any questions, brief questions for him about it, um, he's here to answer.
So the principal from EVCON just walked in. If, um, do you, any board members have questions right now of what Valerie's gone through so far? All set?
Uh, I just have a, a couple. In terms of, uh, of establishing what the installation cost is, who pays, and what the return on investment, that's all mentioned is, I guess, coming down the pipe. Once we sign this, we'll have a better understanding of the financial.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of a tricky part of the...
Just introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Hi, this is Luther Bates. I'm, uh, principal of EVCON. You might know me from the Nines Art Gallery, so I have a, sort of a vested interest in seeing some stuff move forward downtown. I think this is something that is a draw for tourism and will bring people in as a destination, not only in the summertime as an amenity, but also in the off-season. I think it could be a draw. And, um, sorry, I just got here from the gallery and I ran up the stairs. So, the, the, there's a...
That's okay. I appreciate all that aspect. I was just wondering about the, uh, talk about return ROI and stuff. I wondered how that was working out.
Yes, so there's a, it's compared to, uh, the private sector, where you can do things sequentially, town has a little bit of a funding cycle issue. So what we're doing here is offering to do a lot of the work that we usually do later on after the, an agreement is reached with us, just as sort of a pro bono thing, and just, um, we have to get into the queue with the ever-source, because the, they tell us whether there's sufficient power in the site. So we'll submit that intake form you have there. They'll do a site assessment, some engineering on their end. A lot of it can be done by, by computer, and they look at their grid capacity, and they determine if they have sufficient power to deliver it to the site. So before we have that information, we won't know if you're allowed to have two chargers, or if you're allowed to have four chargers, or six. So there's no way we can price out a, a proposal until we know that number. I mean, we can give you five different scenarios, but it just makes sense to do this free assessment, find out what the, the total number of chargers that the site has the capacity for, and then from there, build out the pricing model. And once we know that...
That's okay, it's coming.
Yeah, oh, yes, for sure. That, that'd be the next step after, after ever-source returns to us with the count. So we propose either four or six chargers there. I think we bid six in that proposal. Made sense for the size of the parking lot, size of the parking need in the town area. And they'll get back to us, and ideally, they just say, yes, that's okay. But they might get back to us and say, ooh, there's only power for four, and then we have to revise our, our sort of idea there.
I'm curious on, down the way, because, you know, parking is such a premium in Harwich Port particularly. Is there a mechanism there to partner with private locations as well to, you know, to put in a charger? So we're not taking a municipal parking spot, for instance, and they could, maybe that's a benefit for a private.
Sure, but at the same time, you, you do have that opportunity, and I think we'll see more and more of the private entities are already in line ahead of you, potentially. I'm not sure who is downtown yet. Parking is at a premium, but I think you want to look at it more like we're not losing a parking spot to this, is that we're gaining a parking spot to this. It's like, as the wave of EV vehicles that is inevitably coming, starts coming, you have the opportunity now to get your charging slots funded, or wait and maybe not have them funded, and then have to pay out a pocket for them.
That's it, Larry? Any follow-up? Joe, do you have anything on this?
I do. Sorry, having a quick conversation. I'm not, I'm not sure what the town's relationship is presently with EVCON. So could you describe that?
We, we don't have any specific relationship. I mean, I'm, I'm known in the community. We have a, I'm not even sure, a formal relationship? No, there's none. So what we would, we'd like to, and it's like the dawn of this era here. And there's a lot of, the pathway hasn't yet been written. So we've done projects in the private sector, and we're trying to just say like, oh, well, now we have an opportunity to do in the municipal sector. And we've never done one in the municipal sector before, so...
So it may not be a surprise to the board. The town would need to go through some level of procurement on this. Even if we were to accept pro bono services, the town still has to understand that there's a value in those services. So the town would have to seek proposals. That's my immediate reaction to that. Unless the town wants to be the applicant by itself to Eversource.
Thank you, Joe. Valerie?
Yeah.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Yeah, I, I think the, it's a two-part thing here. All we're asking for today is that we put our application into Eversource. That, all that does is get us in a queue. It doesn't obligate us to do anything. That's one thing. Whether we go with EVCON or any other company, when we get to the point of actually looking to build the charging stations, then we will probably have to go out to bid. We probably will have to get, you know, other companies in. EVCON hopefully will give us their proposal, and if there are any other companies that do this kind of thing, they can come and give their proposals. We do know that we'll probably have to go to town meeting if, if this is something that the board wants to pursue, you know, to, to get the money, you know, put, have a warrant article. So all of that is like, we understand that part. This is just to get, kind of saving our space in the queue for Eversource.
Thank you. Joe?
And does that ever expire? Like, once Eversource approves you, is there like a timeframe that you have to?
I think there's a renewal period required. You have to like maintain your application.
Yeah, so you have to maintain the application.
So actually, so I guess the first question is, can, you know, without complicating things in terms of pro bono work, that we would then first go through Utility and Energy, the Energy Committee, through the town, put our name on the application, and then continue, because I know what the queue, the queue is going to be pretty unbearable, because I deal with Eversource quite frequently. So get our name in there with the town's name on the application, and we do the follow-up to see where we're at. See where, when we're going to have a site meeting and all of that. And, and so at least we can get in the queue, because obviously, this is a need from a town perspective, and we could, if we could put our application in with our, with the town's name and information. And then obviously, if we're lucky enough to get these charging stations and move forward, we would then go into it.
We just sort of teed it up for you. So, there you go.
Because you know the process, and we appreciate that. So just for clarification, currently, the, what we have in our packet indicates your, you know, EVCON. So if we could revise everything and put it in the town's name so that we could get in the queue, and then we could follow it from there. And myself, Valerie, and Cindy are also going to have a brief meeting on Friday, just to discuss this and other opportunities. So I think if we could do that, it would be helpful if the board was willing to do that.
Thank you. Joe?
I think what Selectmen Kavanaugh just identified is the way to go. The sample application, the packet indicates that the town has a charging station vendor, and we do not. And so that's why what Selectmen Kavanaugh is saying is if the town is the applicant and the town fills in the site information, we can get in the queue, then we can take the next steps. But to present it as is, we, we couldn't go forward as presented.
Luther?
There was just some value that we had to our existing relationships, so we just thought that you'd be fast-tracked that way.
And of course, it's the municipal government, so here we are.
That's right. So that's the last thing we want down here, right, is any extradition.
Valerie, you got to talk at the microphone.
We, we did, we did have this discussion that, you know, because they hadn't done a municipal project before, we, Cindy and I were like, oh, well, you know, you know you're going to have to do this, and you know you're going to have to do that.
Right.
But it will, but it's good, and I think, you know, it's, it's how we get things done, and we will hopefully have charging stations.
And remember, it's a municipal government entity dealing with the utility company, so maybe we'll have an answer in a couple of years.
Let me, if I just take a few seconds, just to make sure that we, I might have missed this part, but the queue is for funding that hasn't been authorized by the Department of Public Utility. So, so there's, however many, a hundred applicants are there with their application is already there and approved, and their charger numbers. And so, but no, no work is being done yet.
Right. No, I know that.
Okay, I understand that.
I guess, Joe, that's my question. Because there's no money changing hands here, or even, I mean, it has to come back to us. Why can't a resident local company have their name on an application as it's their idea to put charging stations in? It's going to come back out to bid anyway. No money's changing hands. There's certainly a benefit to EVCOM having their name on the application, but under procurement laws, I don't see how we're doing anything wrong. It makes no sense to me.
This, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mike. In the thirty B, there's an exemption, which, which may fall under this category. It's in the engineering, architecture, and I know, you know, the third category. It's, it's the last one on the, on the thirty B exemption sheet.
So, if I could, Mr. Chairman, back through you, that could all be well and good. The application in front of us says the town's charging station vendor is EVCON, and that is not a fact.
Okay.
The town does not have a contractual relationship, whether that relationship is required under thirty B or best practices.
Okay.
So the town could be the applicant. We can eventually acquire a vendor relationship pro bono or not, but we don't presently have one.
Okay. Julie?
No, I...
Sorry, Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you, can you assist me, Joe? Where does it say that we have a vendor?
Uh, it's a third, a third going down there.
Yeah?
Eversource application.
I'm looking right at it.
Cited information below where it says, please contact Luther. Charging station vendor you are currently working with, if any, EVCON.
That part, if, if that section were taken out, the other part about contacting whomever, it doesn't imply contractual relationship at all.
I'm merely referring to the section that identifies the town's vendor.
Look, I could see expunging that. The only thing that I'm concerned about is, Lord knows, and you know yourself, Joe, that I started out my career in contracting, and one year turned me into this. It's, it's daunting. It takes forever. But keep your eyes focused on the, I think you misspoke a little bit, Valerie. New cars have to be, can't, can't be gasoline-powered. Nonetheless, the Cape is notorious for not having really reliable electricity in general. The transformers aren't all that great in a lot of locations. They're undersized. And the grid itself has got a problem. So I mean, at some point or another, they, they've got to have a metric at Eversource about the magnitude of what we're looking at here, because you don't just park your car, walk away, shop at Dr. Gravities, and then come back, because it's not like a gas station. It doesn't charge in five minutes. There's nothing I know of.
Right. You need about an hour.
Yeah.
You know, so...
And that's with a fast charger, high current.
Right, which is what would be proposed.
Which I assume you're going to do. But that ups the ante for the power company, because it has to be a higher level of...
You're absolutely right, and I think part of the problem that we're all facing at this moment in time is that we're getting ready to shift to a different paradigm for energy. What was that thing? There's a famous picture. It has a picture of like New York City with one car and ten horse, and, and the road is filled with horse-drawn wagons, and there's one car wending its way down, down the road. And I, like, how many years later? Like, let's say ten years later, same picture, same road. There is a hundred cars and one horse parked on the side. It happened so quick, you know, so, so every, it's all going to change.
I get it. It was just that I...
Too many people talking.
There's an urgency to this, because the magnitude of this is massive.
Right, and they are working to upgrade the grid. I mean, all these things are also happening, yeah, at the same time.
Okay. Julie?
So I would like to just make a motion so we can move on.
Thank you.
So, I move that we move forward with the Eversource application, with the town as the applicant, to assess the vehicle charging stations' locations.
And authorize the town administrator to sign?
Yes.
Absent listing, EVCON.
On behalf, no, right, it's the town applying.
Yeah, that's...
Nobody else. Just the town.
I just had one question.
Hang on.
Was there a second?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, Valerie?
So I understand what Joe's trying to say about, you know, we don't have, you know, we haven't contracted officially with EVCON. My fear is that if we don't have somebody looking out for this application, other than the town, but all of you are so busy, who is going to take the responsibility of following up with this? And, you know, it's like...
Selectmen Kavanaugh.
I will. I talk to Eversource frequently.
Perfect. Okay. Just, just want to make sure it doesn't get lost in the show.
No, and I, I know another contact there too, so I will dig that.
And you love it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We've been talking about this for a few years now, so it's nice to see it underway. Uh, I think we are on to deed. Can I get a motion on L? It's related to signing of the deed for two oh three Bank Street.
I move we vote to sign the deed for two oh three Bank Street closing.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Mr. Waysley?
Just a quick question. I know, if I can, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Powers, there was discussion of the attorneys of changing some of the language of that deed today. Was that done?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the document that you have in your packet has been vetted by all three councils, or for council for all three parties, and recommend that the board adopt the deed, and we would ask the board to sign three original versions of the deed.
And that change that we're referring to is related to the easement, correct?
And that is... There were a couple of proposed changes. However, after consultation with staff and the attorneys, everyone came to agreement. So what is presented to the board in your signature package is the appropriate and proper quick claim deed.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Michael, you all set? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero?
And again, there are three originals, and the closing is scheduled for Friday.
Great news.
For all.
Can I get a motion on M?
Vote to approve, I move that we vote to approve the committee appointments recommended by the interview committee, which is one, Elizabeth Hodder, Harwich Housing Committee, full member, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion? Don?
Yeah, I, I know Elizabeth to be involved in an awful lot of stuff. She's already a housing authority, and the CPC is a member representing the housing authority, Assembly of Delegates, this would give her housing committees. So there's a volume question that I have. I, I, I'm not going to stand in the way of her getting appointed, but I, my own experience over the last year, I hope she focuses on teamwork and opportunities rather than accusations over the course of the next year.
Thank you, Don. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Abstain? Three, zero, one, Joe.
And the next, and move that we vote Sandy Passrack as Conservation Commission member, full member, expiring July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Second. Where'd you have to pronounce it?
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, Mr. Chairman?
Four, zero, yes.
Pickleball, again.
Four, yeah, old business. Discussion of potential pickleball rate changes for expanded evening hours, two oh four Sisson Road. Eric is here. Eric, do you want to give us an overview of what you're looking for?
Sure. I am Eric Beebe, pickleball director. So this is, we had some requests for a night pickleball program. It wouldn't be an expansion of the current program. It would be a new program for pickleball nights. It'd be a short program. The gym is going to be booked starting January twenty-third by a private soccer group, five nights a week. So this would run potentially from starting as early as next week through January twenty-third. They're looking for Tuesday and Friday nights, six PM to eight PM. We were looking to charge thirty-five dollars per registrant. That's for about twelve meetings, twelve sessions. Twenty of each, twenty dollars of each registration fee would go towards the building. The other fifteen would cover the recreation staff that would be there nuts to supervise the program. So that's what they're looking to do, starting as early as we possibly can.
Any idea how many people we're talking about, Eric?
We're going to probably limit it to thirty, between thirty and forty people, just because there's, you know, limited space for what we can do in a two-hour span.
Can you just repeat what percentage of the thirty-five goes to the building and what goes to you?
Twenty dollars out of the thirty-five would go toward the building. Fifteen would go, that's what we would need to pay our staff member for those four hours a week.
Okay. Questions from the board, Larry? Don?
It's more like a regular comment, as you've heard earlier, is that whatever you're covering is not just the operation costs of a building, but it's a building that is not going to be new forever, and the upgrade costs have to be borne by everybody who uses it.
Sure, sure.
Julie?
Can I sign up tonight?
Sure. I'll put your name down.
No, I want to learn.
Joe?
I just want, for clarification purposes, the twenty of the thirty-five you said would, quote, go to the building. You mean to say that it goes to the revolving fund?
Yes, the two oh four Sisson Revolving Fund. Yep.
Julie and I want bleachers.
Eric, I, I don't know how much of the conversation you heard tonight. I don't think you were here for the Capital Outlay Finance Committee joint meeting, but Finance Committee had a lot of questions about the cost of what we're about to spend in that building if we get it approved from town meeting.
Sure.
And pickleball, as, as you know, from the last time we talked about this, at seventy-five dollars with, I believe, fifteen or eighteen, what goes to the, what goes to the building out of the seventy?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, yep.
So we get twenty out of that, now twenty out of this. Isn't coming close to making a dent in what it costs to open and close that section of the building.
Yep.
So it's, it's good for me now that we are, we're talking about only until January twenty-third.
Yeah.
So I'm going to be less critical.
Yep.
But on the seventy-five dollars for five months, five days a week, I hope that you could see from what we saw tonight, we're going to need to get an awful lot of support from town meeting to keep this building.
Sure.
And the vision that we see. And we need to be a little more thoughtful, or a lot more thoughtful, on what rates are for extended periods of time.
Okay.
I don't have a doubt that if you go out to market with this gym, and we market this gym, private organizations will pay a top dollar to rent this gym. Now, the building is for our community, and I certainly appreciate and respect that. But we're under a microscope from the Finance Committee and past members of the Finance Committee on... and past members of the Finance Committee on, on cost of that building.
Sure.
So you really need to keep that in mind.
Got it.
So the request is to approve from now until January 23rd.
Yep.
Is that a safe date?
Yep.
$35 for pickleball to be able to use the gym two nights a week. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Is that sufficient, Joe?
I'm not going to read the rates. I mean, the rate is-
I think technically it has to come back at a future meeting. The agenda simply talks about discussion of potential.
We hear it.
And I don't know that you had packet material that gets to that.
Well, Attorney General's pretty clear on if it's on an agenda, it's reasonably assumed and action will be taken on it. We're not meeting again until December 19th and I see no reason to hold this up.
And I'm not your attorney, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, no, I agree. I would take the risk on this.
But you've stated a holiday.
I haven't been.
Mike, to your, to your point, I didn't, I didn't raise the question because I don't want to put Eric on the spot. This is a financial aspect that is finding out what the true costs are for the 204 Sisson-
Sure.
-to build into the fee structure. So you need to get those informations from Joe and then expand from that.
Yep.
So far, these fees are in isolation, basically.
Okay, can I get a motion? Oh, it was so moved and seconded. Is that acceptable, Joe?
Yep.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four, zero. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Contracts. Motion on A.
Mr. Chair, I move that we vote to approve a three-year contract commencing on January 1st, 2023 and ending on 11:59 p.m. on December 31st, 2025 for municipal solid waste disposable with CMAAS.
Well, second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? So Joe, I've got a little bit on this one, which I would like to-
Who's second?
Bring back, bring back to the board. Though the dump staff does an outstanding job and it's amazing to me how much we bring in and take out of there, we're, we're being billed $106 a ton in this contract and we're only charging commercial haulers $140 a ton. And I'd like to understand the costs of all the tractor trailers and tractor bodies that we're buying, the staff, and how much we're taking out of there and if we're even covering our costs. And then I'd further into the, into the contract, which is 68, page 68 of our 127 pages tonight. Under Article One, Certain Definitions, Acceptable Facility Waste, Mixed Household Solid Waste Generated Within the Boundaries of Harwich by Residents. We accept trash from Provincetown to Plymouth, I think. And, and, and maybe that's an exaggeration, but we definitely take it from Provincetown, Wellfleet, East Am. We deal with almost every commercial hauler on the Cape. Is that a problem? And why are we doing that? I guess that's the answer I want to know. I don't want to hold up a contract because we do need to get rid of the trash we're bringing in especially for our residents. But it'd be great if the DPW Director could answer the question whether or not we're already out of bounds on our contract if we sign this tonight.
Conversely, though, Mr. Chair, one does CMAAS need to know.
Well, they know now. I just said it.
I mean, know that there's commitment.
Oh. Joe?
Are you looking to have a presentation by the Director of Public Works?
Well, I ultimately am, but before we sign this contract, it says that the trash is going to be from the town of Harwich. And we all know that not to be true.
So I can tell you that the document that you have in front of you is language that was provided by Town's Council in consultation with the vendor. So that may be standard language that Council has offered, but it may not comport with practice. So I can work that back through Town Council if you'd like.
Do we need to, do we need to hold this? And if we do hold it, are we going to expire on the current contract?
Well, I believe the expiration, well, let me step back and say it a different way. The, the start date of this contract is January 1st, 2023. So you have at least one more meeting whereby you could accept the terms and sign the contract and we would still be on track.
Okay. So I think that paragraph needs to be worked on. And then as far as presentation goes, I think we need a little bit more than DPW Director coming in. I think we need the Finance Director to take a look at the actual costs of operating if we're paying 106 and only charging 140. My little bit of research today, Chatham charges 90, but they don't allow any other commercial haulers and they have two commercial haulers from their town only. And most towns don't accept what we're accepting. So I would like a presentation, but I think we need to dive into it a bit with the Finance Director. Does the board want to vote on this or withdraw the second and the motion and bring it back?
Well, we have time to bring it back, I'll bring it back.
We have time.
I will note that we've had this discussion before and the, it needs to be updated, but in previous discussions, the, at least, my understanding was that we were taking other towns' refuse, if you will, because it was possible for us to do so. Though that's not true, the base cost in buying the equipment. But I'm just saying, in the past, we've, it's been the case.
Just, my thing is the amount of effort. Julie?
So I do, you know, previous discussions, I've discussed extensively about this and, you know, I've been a proponent of charging more because I think it costs us a lot. It's a service we provide that isn't a local service. So people are coming to us because we are here. So I think if, you know, we have time and obviously looking at it closer, as I've said in the past, I'm not opposed to looking to charge more. I mean, it is a service and it's expensive.
It has to be profitable for us, you see?
Right, and it is, it has to be possible because we've had it in a con- I imagine this contract is the same as what we've had in the past, but-
Can we, who, who seconded it?
I made the motion.
Larry seconded it.
Remove your second, Larry?
Sure.
Remove the motion, Don?
With one caveat, because we're, I'm hearing something that's getting close to not being legal. The cost of the service, whatever we come up with, has got, we can't make a profit.
I understand.
It can only be what it costs us to do and reasonable allocation for business overhead for the Finance Director, the Director of DPW, the TA.
Right, you're going to have that conversation.
But, but as I said, the word profit doesn't enter into that. So I withdraw my, my motion, but it can't be a profitable endeavor. There might, there might be a bigger spread that we can achieve because there's more things to ascribe to it.
I agree to that.
All right, let's get the motion on B. That one's off the table now. Motion on B.
Okay, vote to approve a contract with McGovern Auto Group Corp. Services Incorporated for purchase, a Ford Super Duty F-350 truck with plow for the golf department in the amount of $105,357.81.
Second.
Who signed it? The whole board or?
Moved and seconded. That, that one is the whole board.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next motion?
Same deal with the whole board?
Yeah.
Okay. Move that we vote to approve a contract with Colonial Ford Incorporated doing business as Colonial Municipal Group to purchase three vehicles for the police department for a total contract price of $144,927.36 with the board to sign.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrators report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, some contracts of my own that I've signed that I want to inform the board of. First one is for tree removal and tree trimming contract. There is, should be a copy in your packets of a fully executed agreement between the town and seaside arborists. This is both from highway funds and cemetery revolving account. So it was $15,000 from cemetery, $20,000 from DPW was available. The estimated cost is $1,700 per day. We anticipate the total cost, though, not to exceed $20,000. That's it for contracts. My only other update would be to say, first of all, one of my favorite weekends of the year. This past weekend is when we begin to celebrate the holidays in the town of Harwich. So the stroll was fantastic. The course that we had of, I believe they were Harwich Elementary, all grades or most grades, whatever, third and fourth, maybe. They, they introduced some new numbers. So there are new Christmas carols that are out there. And given the way that the children were bopping to that, it, it was quite a lot of fun. And then for me, I had a chance to stop by and see the Harwich Firefighters Association getting ready to take ownership of 203 Bank Street. And just to see the camaraderie that they had gives me great hope for the future and the camaraderie that we expect them to enjoy on that site for years to come, in addition to their partners in the Harwich Conservation Trust on the land. So really nice to see. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Joe. Selectment report, Julie?
I attended the stroll as well. It was wonderful and it was a great kickoff.
I always ask you guys if you're there.
Yeah, no, I, I was there. It was a great atmosphere. So thank you for all your hard work once again.
Don?
Yep, several things. Cindy did a terrific job. I know that Deputy Costa and I were musing over the fact that when they first moved in there, there were about 18 people on the stroll in Harwichport.